Be to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Everybody, for the record, there is a copy of the Open Meetings Act here on the north wall of legislative chambers. If anybody needs it for health reasons, there's an automatic defibrillator in the back behind the dividers there. And also, if you've got a cell phone, I'd ask you to silence it or turn it off. With that, we will call to order the Douglas County Board of Equalization meeting. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Borgeson, Commissioner Boyle is absent, Commissioner Kavanaugh, Commissioner Duda, Commissioner Kraft, Commissioner Morgan, Mr. Chair.
Here. And if we can note for the record, Commissioner Boyle will be late. There is a service that he's at that he wanted to attend on that respect, so he will be here, but he will be late. With that, we'll call, we'll go to item A, approval of the minutes of the Board of Equalization meeting held Tuesday, May 21, 2019, and item B is called for a meeting set Tuesday, 11, 2019, as the date for hearing on certified assessments and corrections. What's the will of the board? Motion by Commissioner Duda, is that second? Second by Commissioner Kraft. Please vote.
Motion passes six to zero.
Item C is citizens' comments. This is an opportunity for citizens to comment on Board of Equalization-related items that are not listed on the agenda. Are there any citizens' comments at this time? Seeing none, we'll go to resolutions D, E, and F. What's the will of the board? Motion, motion by Commissioner Kraft, their second?
Is that included German?
Yes. There's a second by Commissioner Duda. With that, Mr. Clerk.
We are ready.
No, you're.
Oh, thank you for reminding me. On item E, approving the application for tax exemptions on motor vehicles, there's just one to note for the record, there's two buses for the Eastern Nebraska Community Action Partnership, which I'm a board member on, so just wanted to disclose that.
Okay. With that, please vote.
Motion passes six to zero.
We can now call to order the Douglas County Board of Commissioners meeting. Roll call.
Commissioner Borgeson, Commissioner Boyle is absent, Commissioner Kavanaugh, Commissioner Duda, Commissioner Kraft, Commissioner Morgan, Mr. Chair.
Here. Item one is the minutes and claims. Item A is the approval of the minutes of the Douglas County. Justice in the Form held Thursday, May 9, and the Board of Commissioners meeting held Tuesday, May 21. Item B is approval of claims submitted for payment and process through Tuesday, June 4, 2019. What's the will of the board? Motion by Commissioner Kraft, their second by Commissioner Duda. Please vote.
Motion passes six to zero.
Item two is the consent agenda. There are 11 items on the consent agenda. What's the will of the board? Motion by Commissioner Kraft, their second. Second by Commissioner Duda. Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Thank you. I have a couple of questions on items H and I, which I think are probably related. And I don't know who from the staff, or if Mr. Mersak is here to discuss these grants.
Hi.
Hello, President, Rich Mersak, grant specialist.
So, taking them in order, H, approval of an agreement between Douglas County and the Child Savings Institute for Alternative to Detention Services.
Yes.
Twenty-five thousand dollars in grant funds. What's that about?
Okay, so next year they're approved for the CBA grant, they're starting a reception center in town here that's working with probate to take kids that are homeless wherever that when they get pulled in, they don't just go straight into detention. They'll go there to be assessed, so they're not held in detention at that time. And it's to help find placements outside of detention for the youth, working with probation and risk assessment. And this is just an early start for the program.
Say again.
And this is just an early start from the program with, there's an unobligated fund in the current year, and so with that money, we found that we can start the program earlier, and so we're getting it started now.
Okay. As far as this Alternative to Detention Services agreement with the Child Savings Institute, who drafted that?
Who drafted the?
This document?
The agreement?
Yes.
I drafted part of that, yes.
Okay. And tell us what exactly that does.
The agreement? It's so that when kids are taken in, before they go to probation for assessment, or they're detained in any instance, they're taken to the reception center of Child Savings Institute, which is kind of an open door, they're not detained in any way. So that they will notify probate that the kids are, the youth of theirs, so they can be in their assessment of the youth. It's to prevent them, it's to prevent them from being detained in any way.
So, when you say kids are taken in?
Yes.
Talk to me about that. Kids are taken in by whom, where, how?
Youth. So, if a child is homeless, or a truant, or in another situation where they might take them to probate and have them detained, before they go to detention, they'll take them to the reception center. This is any, like, police, you know, the people who actually bring in the, bring in the youth. There's a certain time where they might be detained while it's determined the course of action that needs to be taken, if they need to go to court, or whatever needs to happen. So instead of detaining them for a few days, waiting for that risk assessment, they'll go to the youth, the youth center, or the, not the youth center, the reception center first.
So, again, these children are under the jurisdiction of juvenile probation? Is that correct?
I don't know if I could answer that. Yeah, yeah.
The process.
That's what I'm getting to. How do, how do the kids come in contact with anyone from the state in this program?
The person will get picked up by whichever law enforcement brings them in, whether it's the Omaha Police Department, or if it's the sheriff. Instead of them going down to the detention center to get the assessment and go through the process, they will go down to CHI, where then, I mean CSI, where CSI then will assess them and determine what their next steps. The process of that is to get out of the fact that actions need to happen down at the detention center. So when they get there and get assessed, they will then try to work with them to provide services to the child and the family, so they don't have to sit in detention waiting for that process to happen.
Okay. So, this document is to allow the Omaha Police Department and the Douglas County Sheriff's Office to?
The document is just a change of location. What the process that would usually happen at the detention center now will happen at the Child Savings Institute.
So this document says that the law enforcement agency, Omaha Police Department, Douglas County Sheriff's Department, or others, who currently arrest children and take them to the youth center, will now arrest children and take them to CSI? Is that correct?
No, this document only provides the funding for it. The program was initiated, is initiated to start in July 1 of 2019 for the 19th physical year. Because of the Nebraska Crime Commission rules, there's extra money left over this year, and that money can only be used to give to a program if they're gonna continue until the next year. This program will continue next year. So this money is to give them a early start to start now and start up right now, instead of waiting till July. So this project is not in respects to allowing anything contractually to happen. That is an understanding between probation and CSI, not us. This is just the money that flows to make that operate. So with that, if, time's up on this question.
Well, I have one last question. The duration of this program is April 1.
Whoa, 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 your time's up on this. So if somebody else.
April 1, 2019 to June 30 of 2019. It's already over. Why are we doing this?
The gentleman's, the gentleman's time's up on this. Unless somebody wants to speak, then you can go back in to your, your second five. Well, wait, you can go after this. Commissioner Kavanaugh, if you want a second five, you're on now.
Then I have some questions for the probation office. Are they here?
They're not. Because this is not, this is not a program for the probation office in some expense. Now, the director will be here today for a budget hearing, and if you want to ask her some of that in her budget process, you can.
Yeah, well, this is a good example of how not planned these things are. So we don't have the law enforcement people here, we don't have the probation people here, we don't have, I presume, anybody even from CSI here, for a grant period that is substantially over. April 1 was the period that this was requested for initially?
Yes.
And it's over, what's the end of the grant period?
The grant period ends in June 30.
June 30.
It continues for next year.
June already. So, we're asking for money for a period that's already gone by, for a program that may or may not even exist, and there's nobody here to talk about it.
This is just to bring in the personnel to the reception center. This isn't to change what goes what.
Because it's, it's not like this, when the program is asked, when process was asked for, it's not in his hands. It's in the Crime Commission's hands. So a lot of this delay when we ask is when the Crime Commission gets back up and allows us to do it. This process today is not only to make the money flow, and the decision for this is not the board's. The decision is the community advisory group that's in prescription, that's required by the Crime Commission. That group approved this money to flow. The board just approves it. So the money is for the programming to go. The understanding for the program is between probation, and this is a regular process that we've done for years. It's our call pretty much for the pass-through. The program is in the three-year plan that the county puts together every year, and so that's what this is in respects. It's late because we asked for it at an earlier period, and there was some back and forth that the Crime Commission wanted us to do, and we had to go through with that. So the Crime Commission has to have final approval, and they approve this to flow from where it is.
I don't know that we can vote for programs that have periods that have already elapsed on understandings that are frankly incomprehensible, that ignore legal realities like the right to arrest people and detain people, without anybody here to address any of those legal realities. This is a good example of seat-of-the-pants juvenile justice policy that essentially is privatizing what we do now. What we do now is legally responsible entities in law enforcement take children to a legally authorized Douglas County Youth Center, and this says, we're not gonna do that anymore. We're gonna spend money on CSI, or some other private entity, and we're gonna wash our hands of this process. And I, frankly, I'm not comfortable with us saying, we're not responsible for spending public monies. Yes, we are. We're not responsible for where our kids go. Yes, we are. And we're not responsible for having that discussion with the appropriate authorities here. Yes, we are. So this is, this is not the way to do it, and I, I don't really understand how we can go forward with a grant that's period is pretty much already expired. But moving on, the second grant, this is a new topic, approval of an agreement between Douglas County and the Urban League of Nebraska for School-Based Intervention Services. This is another grant that you drafted, correct?
Yeah, this is a portion of a grant, yes.
Okay. So what does this one do?
This one is for youth attendance navigators, the Urban League going to the schools and they help with the children before they get to the truancy and absenteeism. They help keep the kids in school if they're having trouble staying in classes. This program, this part will bring in a new person that's specialized in trauma-informed care to help them make better decisions that deal with kids that are affected by trauma, and that might be why they're missing the school. And they're gonna help develop curriculum for next year while working to address these issues.
Okay.
This person's gonna do.
And these are children in what schools?
These ones are Nathan Hill, I believe, and the King Science Center, I believe. I could be wrong. I'd have to look through this.
I'm sorry, the second one? If you know. I mean, I, is it King Science? Did you say King Science, sir?
I think so, but I could be misspeaking, so.
So these are Omaha Public Schools?
Yes, these are Omaha Public Schools, yes.
All right. And we're not authorizing Omaha Public Schools to conduct this program, but another private entity, the Urban League?
Yes.
Correct? Okay. And again, this program, the duration of this grant was April 1, 2019?
This one specifically starts in June. It's not, it doesn't start in April.
Okay. What's the duration of this grant, then?
June.
June? Just the month of June?
Yeah, that's when they'll have the person come in. They'll come in four times to meet them this month, to meet with current youth navigators that are already in the schools.
Well, actually, the school's out. My children go to public school and then.
Yes, that's understood. That's why they're gonna develop curriculum for next year.
The commissioner's time is up. Let me note on this statement that was made. The process that the commissioner stated is incorrect, because this is not the county turning anything over. This is not privatizing anything. Basically, a process that would have happened at the detention center will now happen with probation at a community-based organization. And that community-based organization is providing facilitation of community services that an organization would have done anyway, and that we contract with several of them to do. So it's not a privatization in any point, and it is a fact to try to connect earlier in the process, people to service, so they don't have to sit in the detention center to wait for that process to happen. So it's moving things up in that respect. Now, I saw some hands up. If somebody wants to comment on this specific deal, you're on the clock to make your comment, and you can go from there.
How much time do I have?
You'll have five minutes. It's on the clock.
Luis Jimenez.
On this specific item, these two specific items.
Well, yeah, it's a grant money.
Yes.
Five, Luis Jimenez, 518 North 40th Street. Thanks for pointing this out, Commissioner Kavanaugh. I've been wondering what the preventative components to juvenile justice look like. Recently, there have been public officials that have commented that the programatics is getting handled, and that's why we should move forward with the HDR plan. I'd agree with that. And these two items highlight, actually nicely, what I'm thinking, because you have item I, it's $8,000 for school-based intervention services, $8,000. For that part of the school system, getting grant money at intervention should include suspension, early childhood suspension, have more money for that, because it's, becomes a whole system when kids aren't learning at school. And then also, H is the $25,000 for alternatives to detention services. And as far as I understand, it's paperwork that you're funding with $25,000. I'm reminded that $20,000 was offered for the commissioners to spend on alternative plan to juvenile detention. So it's a small number, 20, 25,000, for alternatives to detention services. It's disappointing, and I'm not convinced that you have a handle on the programatics. This is the same thing, and hopefully, Mr. Rogers, you're not saying there's something new. And I don't think you are. So.
So let me ask you a question. It's a small amount, because this takes, this takes them through the end of.
June?
This physical year. The program will be starting and paid in full starting July 1.
So this is something you do every year?
As I mentioned, they apply for money for the CBA grant.
Every year?
And they're getting money for a program that's gonna start July 1. Per the Crime Commission.
Okay.
We have money left over from this year. So the only reason that, the only way the money could flow to some existing people now is if it's for a program that will continue. So this small amount of money is for the remaining of the year, to get an early start on programming that will start July 1, for the whole year that will end in June of 2020.
Okay.
Which you're getting money for in the second item, which is I, is the organization that's getting the money is gonna have trauma-informed care training, so they will know how to deal with the trauma that affects the kid and the family that they're dealing with.
Is that speaking with the sheriff too, about not shackling the kids?
That has nothing, you're on a whole nother process.
Best traumatic informed.
You're on a whole nother process.
Anyway, thank you for answering my question. Well, can you stop my time, please, then?
Finish your time. I'll answer after that. It's on you.
Okay. Well, I'm, you're talking about existing people now, that's fine. When the young kids start getting suspended, those will be existing kids at that time, and hopefully there's gonna be funding for the preventing escalation of their troubles in the school systems and beyond. Thank you.
Larry Store, 5015, excuse me, Lafayette, Omaha, Nebraska. I'm very upset about this, particularly just before the G-Day. My birthday is June 6. I honor our country. I submit this article. This is going on in many states, and right now, there are many people getting their backs up about it. This is a national movement on mental health. I submit this to the council, or the board and the city council, since it's a joint operation. 130 different organizations per, we're on that daily last night. It's a nationwide focus on health. You people get the cameras.
Okay, Larry, wait a minute.
And the sound. I don't know.
No, 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 no.
No, this is on the topic. Now, please.
Okay, we'll get to the topic, because you're talking about D-Day.
This is on the topic. I just stopped talking about D-Day. I just mentioned mental health, okay?
Okay, well, get there. Thank you.
Thank you. Publications in Omaha, also on that. Mary Ann was on the TV the other night. As I mentioned, you people get the media, and you get the cameras. The citizens don't. But I'm telling you, this is just like the programs that Adolf Hitler had. We don't want you taking our children. We don't want you assessing our children. We don't need and don't want to pay for a threat assessor. This is the topic. It's in your own documents and the city council documents. So please don't shut me up, and don't shut up the citizens. Let the citizens know about this. That article purports that very few of those individuals that will be threat assessors will get minimal training, minimal training, and be able to spot, oh, there's a child out there that needs to be detained. But instead of to the juvenile center, we're gonna take him to CSI, PSI, whatever you wanna call it, or somebody else, because an outside organization donated money? That's totally out of whack. So the inmates ought to be some of you people. If you pass this, if you allow this, it's a usurp patient of my rights, of every American citizen's rights, and particularly children who don't get to speak for themselves. I've seen a lot of this system of so-called social services, and the so-called counselors, the so-called therapists, the so-called interventionists. And they don't always know what the hell they're talking about, because they don't know the person. They don't care about the person. They're sitting somewhere down in Lincoln and approving a document that comes across their desk that says, we'll pay for this. But they do not know the patient. Yet they're willing to continue the fallacy that that child, or me, has a mental illness, because I'm speaking like I am, I have a mental illness. You're right. I am upset with my government, and we didn't elect you guys to continue a national agenda to take over healthcare and to take over our children. They've done enough of that already. Thank you.
Commissioner Kraft.
And I would just like to point out that these are some of the programs we've been talking about and promoting. The grant, the Douglas County Board of Commissioners accepted the grant on July 31, 2018, for this purpose. And if commissioners would read the backup documents, many of the questions that were asked today are explained in the backup documents. Matter of fact, I think every question that was asked today would be explained in the backup documents. This is also part of the public-private partnerships that we have been encouraged to participate in for decades, and we have participated when it's appropriate. So, yeah, this is all talk about things that were decided July 31, 2018, and discussed over and over and over again. So I, I don't know how we can keep discussing the same thing over and over. Thank you.
With that, there's a motion to second on the floor to approve the consent agenda. Please vote. There's a motion to separate H and I first. So the motion is to approve the consent agenda minus H and I. Whenever you're ready. Just one second. This is, everything except H and I, then we'll come back.
Motion passes six to zero. Oh, you didn't yet. I'm sorry. I miss Ellen.
We do, too.
There we go. All right, now it passes six to zero.
Is there a motion to approve items H and I? Motion by Commissioner Duda, second by Commissioner Kraft. Please vote.
And I'd just like to say, I'm voting against these, not because I don't believe that we should be engaged in alternatives to detention services, but I, I think these are very poorly planned, obviously not prepared for prime time. Nobody here from the affected agencies to even explain what they're gonna do. And something involving OPS's curriculum should certainly have an OPS spokesperson to address whether or not they're even gonna entertain this. This is part and parcel of the behind closed doors juvenile justice scheme that's being perpetrated over and over, and the fact that we're approving them ex post facto just shows how ridiculously poorly planned they really are.
And for the record, this has nothing to do with OPS's curriculum at all. Please vote, nothing. It has nothing to do with that. Please vote.
Motion passes. Commissioner Kavanaugh voting no, all other commissioners voting yes.
With that, we'll go to item three, which is recognition and proclamations. We'll take item A, B, and C together, and then do D separately. Item A is recognition of the following county employees retiring. Danny E. Coleman is retiring from the Douglas County Health Center after 34 years of service. Angela Young is retiring from the Douglas County Health Center after 12 years of service. And Mary Burmeister is retiring from the Douglas County Sheriff's Office after 23 years of service. Are any of them here by chance? With that, we ask for a motion to approve A, B, and C.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Borgeson, second by Commissioner Morgan. Please vote. Please vote.
Motion passes six to zero.
Item D is the recognition of the following county employees. Kenneth L. Matthews, senior, retiring from the Douglas County Department of Corrections after thirty years of service. Director Meyer.
Excuse me, Mike Myers, Director of Corrections. Sergeant Kenny Matthews was one of the first people who I got to know when I came to the Department of Corrections as a case manager in the reentry assistance program almost twelve years ago. Over that course of time, I got to know him on different levels. When I became the community corrections manager, he became known to me as a staunch advocate for our staff, um, for, and our clients that we serve in community corrections. We've had many spirited discussions over the years. Um, I've enjoyed his company very much. We've bantered back and forth about many issues. He also is retiring as the president of the African-American Correctional Officers Association, of which several of their board members are present here today to show their support. Since I took over as director, and I've worked with him more on that level, I've come to develop a deep appreciation for his respect and protection of the rights of everyone. And he has swayed my opinion on more than one occasions with his passionate and logical positions that he's taken in meetings with me. He is one of the people that serves as an inspiration to me, and I will promise him and promise all of you that we will keep his contributions and legacy alive at our department for many years to come. I appreciate the opportunity to get to know you, Sergeant Matthews, and I wish you very well in your retirement.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir.
Before you speak, Sergeant, is there a motion, a second, to approve the item? Motion by Commissioner Duda, second by Commissioner Morgan. Sergeant.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner, thank you all for allowing me to come up here today. First of all, I started there in nineteen eighty-eight. I want to thank Warden Terry, who passed on. He hired me. There was a young lady that worked for Human Resources, little short lady, long hair. I was working at the Red Lion, and I was tired working X amount of hours, and she forwarded my application. So, I'll never forget her, I don't remember her name, but she worked in Human Resources. So, I want to thank her as well. I also want to thank my mom, who passed on, who was my leader. She taught me how to be a leader, and I thank God. So, then, as I look around here, Tanya Burnside, I want to thank her, Vice President, ACOA, President Valkir, Sergeant-at-arm Nicholas Stella. As I look out here, I want to thank the director, executive staff, I must call them by their names, starting out with Mr. Myers, the director, Deputy Director Raymond, Captain Early, Captain West, Mr. Swainy, Ms. Justine Wall, definitely gotta give a shout-out to her. She was my supervisor at CJC. So, I'm not thinking I missed anybody, but I just want to thank everybody for allowing me to work in the Department of Correction, and I thank you guys. I know that, uh, there's a struggle, but we too can overcome it. We had to put God first, and thank you all again. God bless.
Thank you.
Sergeant, you wanna, you wanna come through?
Thank you, thank you. Thank you so much.
So, I'm headed over to Miami Old School to work this year.
Yes, sir.
Deal.
Okay, with that. Commissioner Borgeson.
But thank you for your service, Mr. Matthews, and, um, ask you if you would just consider staying one more year, because if I add up the years that we have on this sheet right now of the four people that are retiring, we're at ninety-nine years. That's right, that's right. Thank you for your service.
Thank you so much. See, see nothing else, there's a motion, a second, on the floor? Please vote.
Motion passes six to zero.
You all right? Item four is citizens' comments. This is an opportunity for citizens to make comment on Board of Commissioners items not listed on the agenda. I ask anybody making comment to please note, um, the, um, requirements under citizens' comments when they make their statement. Are there any citizens' comments at this time?
Yes. Luis Jimenez, five eighteen North Fortieth Street. Good morning, commissioners. I want to update you guys from a, a previous discussion I had here during citizens' comments. Wanted, as the Secretary of Parker Action Alliance Neighborhood Association, which is up on North Twenty-Fourth Street, I went to the Health Department and, um, wanted to talk to a service there that would help me out with, um, the food desert situation. I learned that nutrition for young people, mothers, babies, that is something that the commissioners fund, so that's great. However, I wasn't directed to food access, uh, on the, um, the, um, beyond SNAP. SNAP is particular about what they fund, um, but retail stores aren't available in the area, or abundance, it's not in abundance, so like, if you go west, and you go, you can go to Natural Grocers or Walmarts. So, but I, the association, Parker Action Alliance, recently got funds, four thousand eight hundred and seven dollars for a rededication for Parker Street between Twenty-Fourth Street and Thirty-Fifth Street for George Wells Parker, who helped, who helped immigrate, uh, black southerners during the Great Migration, which is about, like, nineteen seventeen. That was from the mayor. And then, we also got a, um, grant from Omaha Community Foundation for a thousand dollars to help us with our action plan phase one. So, I appreciate that. But I, I'm wanting to get help from the county, thinking maybe the, the Health Department can help out with education on diabetes and, and medical things that you guys already do. But, uh, that was my experience going to the Health Department on, uh, on food, beyond SNAP, that they, actually, I think what it was, was there wasn't a, a director or a manager available. I think that's what it was. But I'm gonna go back. Thank you.
Disappointing information, the Health Department doesn't exactly do services that people in the community already provide, so I would tell you to go to Charles Drew, that's right down the street from you. They provide, Charles Drew Health Center, it's down the street from where you just said, and they will provide you the diabetes educated.
Okay, okay, thank you. Our articles are of incorporation, uh, call for us to work with the county, so I'm, I'm also looking ways to do that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Larry Store, five oh one five, Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, Nebraska, six eight one three This is not on the agenda, and as I read the rule, it's not supposed to be, so I'm gonna bring it up. During one of the last topics, it was said that OPS is not on the agenda. However, let me ask you, and I'd like an answer. How do we move kids from a public school to the Douglas County Youth Center or PSI, CSI, for evaluations? If OPS is not complicit in it, how do you remove a child from school for this? Doesn't somebody at the Omaha Public Schools, or somewhere in Douglas County Schools, have to say, "That child needs interver- an intervention," all before that child goes to a therapist or whoever? All before he's kicked out of school? Disproportionately, by the way. All before he's assigned to the Douglas County Youth Center for behavior? That we don't know what causes his behavior? But CSI is gonna tell us all, over a short period of time? I can think so, folks. And I, when I saw the other day, another citizen is moving out because of property taxes. I probably will be doing that myself before very long. This is why. Twenty-five thousand here, five thousand there, and the program isn't effective. So, you build more beds for kids. You gotta tear down these buildings down here for more kids. But a lot of these programs were in effect for years. Why aren't they working? You should ask the people that are telling you to buy this program. Most of them are probably not from Omaha. Thank you.
Let me just correct your statement. The statement that, uh, kids are being, kinda implied that kids are taken from OPS to go there is not true. The only thing this assess, this center does is assess, and it does not, it assesses if the kid will show up and the risk that they show up to court the next day. There's nothing mental health-wise in there. So, with that, we'll go on to, unless there's any citizens' comments anymore. We'll go on to item, um, six, which is public hearing. Letter A is an addition to the, uh, premise license, uh, Players Club Golf LLC class, um, one dash zero seven one five seven four, doing business at the Players Club, Players Club Golf Course at a one-two-one, uh, oh-one. With that, we'll open the public hearing, but let me note that, uh, if anybody's not here from that, we're gonna have to lay this over if nobody can ask some questions. The notarized sworn affidavit stating that the applicant has provided written notice for the public hearing to property owners located within five hundred feet of the establishment has not been submitted, so unless there's somebody here from that, we are going to just keep the public hearing open. And then, if, I don't know if the clerk can reach out to them and tell them they don't have this, that would...
Yeah, absolutely, I can do that.
Okay. So, with that, we will keep the public hearing open on item A, and, uh, hold that till next week. We'll move to item B, uh, provide additional budget dollars for salary adjustment account and transfer budget dollars that are set aside in salary adjustment account for approved salary increases. Provide additional budget dollars for the budget increase for the employee fringe benefits, public property, share of juvenile court probation, nine-one-one wireless surcharge fund in the amount of one million two hundred and twenty-nine dollars. Joe, you wanna explain this?
Yes, you know that, um, twice a year, we come for budget supplements, and the one we come for, uh, in late May or early June is just to get, uh, us through the last month of the budget. And so, this year, it's really being driven by, um, union contract settlements that have, were previously approved by the board and now have hit payroll. And, uh, this year, we've had a lot of contracts settle, and a lot of these contracts were settling significant amount of time after the expiration date of the, the union contract. So, as part of that, there, there's retro payments that cover that previous period, which from a budgeting sense, you know, last year, actually, the last two years, we didn't use all the money in the salary adjustment account because the contracts really didn't settle at the end of the expiration date, which is when we always budget them to. But this year, everything has kinda settled. So, uh, this is the amount of this money, um, uh, six hundred thousand dollars is going to fund those, uh, pure salary, uh, adjustments, uh, for the, for the union contract settlements. And then, there's also four hundred and fifty thousand dollars being added to the employee fringe benefit, and that's there to cover salary-related expenses, because when the settlements occur, not only is the salary, but we have to pay additional social security and additional pension costs, which are a percentage of salary. So, that is by far the lion's share of, um, this additional, uh, salary, uh, budget adjustment. And then, there's a couple smaller items for public properties. There's twenty-five thousand dollars just to get, um, the public properties group through the year, because utilities have been higher than expected this year because of, uh, as you remember, it was a pretty cold winter that lasted for a long time. So, um, that's just to cover the incremental utility expense. The sheriff has, uh, forty-five hundred dollars in grant-funded expenditures to be added to his budget. Juvenile court probation, uh, needs twenty-five hundred dollars to get, uh, through the course of the year for increased supplies for, uh, the additional probation officers. We're gonna talk about their budget in a little bit. And then, the last significant amount is, um, three hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars, which is really not property tax dollars, but it's in the nine-one-one wireless surcharge fund, which nine-one-one communications has petitioned the Public Service Commission, who gave them approval to spend additional funds out of the wireless surcharge, uh, for additional equipment and project expenses within nine-one-one. So, yeah, if you look at that, that is how we get to the million two hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars, um, for the budget, um, supplement. And I'd be glad to answer any specific questions on that.
Hearing on item B, um, are there any comments from the public? Again, are there any comments from the public? With that, we will close the public hearing. What's the will of the board? Motion by Commissioner Borgeson is a second, second by Commissioner Duda. Please vote.
Commissioner Boyle has joined us, he votes yes, as do the rest of the commissioners. Motion passes.
Uh, with that, we're gonna make, I'm gonna go to item D, because they'll tell me where the budget discussion may go, but item D was held over from two weeks ago because they didn't get on because of the budget discussion, so can't, I'm asking you to come. This community services item one is the annual public evaluation of the Pheasant Point landfill operations and the update on the solid waste-related items. Kent Holm, Douglas County Environmental Services Director.
So, I'm, I'm gonna be pretty brief this morning. The Waste Management Representatives were not able to be here, um, today, because they had some previous commitments. But I'm gonna go through some, some stuff pretty quickly, and then happy to entertain any questions you may have. Just for orientation purposes for those people in the room and, and others that, that need, need to know kind of where this is all happening. Pheasant Point landfill is about five miles west of Bennington on Highway Thirty-Six, Two-hundred Sixteenth Street. This particular area has been kind of home to, to the county's landfill operations for, essentially, since nineteen ninety-eight, um, when it was moved. The, this is the, the particular Pheasant Point landfill, it's the active site, but the Douglas County Recycling disposal facility is the closed site that was, was originally opened after State Street closed in, in nineteen eighty-eight. And so, that, that's been in operation there until about two thousand and three, when it moved to the Pheasant Point site. Uh, there's also the, the OPPD Gas Energy Plant that's located right there, which is taking methane, landfill gas from both of those sites right now. So, in terms of services, the contract that the county has with Waste Management, we provide the operational support at the Scale House and, and collect fees for all of the traffic coming into the landfill. We turn around, and Waste Management does all of the operational stuff, other than that, at the landfill. They're, uh, they're charged with all of the permitting, all of the actual disposal activities and so on, and the associated liability that goes along with that. They also do some, some litter pickup along the county highway, or, excuse me, the highways that lead up to the landfill, uh, I believe to a, a distance out of two miles from the The current base rate per ton coming into the landfill is twenty-five ninety-two, and if you recall back in March... And if you recall back in March, the board took action on proposal, kind of a long-term proposal to change the rate structure. And so to do, in doing so, basically split out that 2592 base rate into three rate categories, looking at basically a residential MSW, meaning municipal solid waste, component. That would be, for example, the city of Omaha's collection contract. That would be relevant to that particular first rate. A commercial collection vehicle that came in would have the same rate for this year as would a construction demolition waste, that same rate. But this just sets up the structure for future, future adjustments, and I can go into more detail with that, but that, that was approved by, by you folks back in March. The other big change that came back in March was the adoption of what we're calling transfer trailer rates. And transfer trailers opens up another waste stream for Waste Management to go after. And basically, these are, are transfer trailers that, that come in from a, from another facility, transfer station, materials recovery facility, and so on. There are large trailers that then have to be tipped up on this tipper that's up in the upper left-hand corner to, to get the trash to, to come out of the trailer. So that, that's kind of a new technology. They, they are still looking to have that operational by July 1st. So, but in order to make that competitive, we needed to have some, some rates that incentivize that. And so these two rates were, were put in place. And again, one is to differentiate the waste streams, one is for municipal solid waste, the other one is for construction and demolition waste. These are the other rates that you approved. These didn't change back in March. These are still consistent with the rates that were adopted back in the end of last year. December 1st is the anniversary date for the landfill contract, and all of these, all of these things were, were reflective of that particular date of adoption. We will be back in front of you in October with this year's Consumer Price Index adjustment, and that's something we do every year. And this year will be a little bit different because of some of the restructuring of these rates, but I can explain that in a little more detail. We went into some detail back in March when we adopted the rates, but I'll, I'll do a more thorough explanation of kind of what's happening with that when we bring that back to you in October. The special event disposal projects continue to play a role in, in the operation out there. As you can see here, we've had 218 of those to date. There's 16 active projects right now. Revenue that those projects have, have brought in since this particular project, or excuse me, that this particular mechanism was put in place back in 2009, just a little under 1.5 million. The revenue from last year was down from what it had been in 2017, but it was still a little over $50,000 from those special event disposal projects. Again, the, the recent contract amendments that you've had in front of you were really the rate structure, adding those transfer trailer rates and splitting that up, and that was done back in March. So to give you a little bit of a, of an analysis here on kinda where we are, 2018 was, was down overall in terms of overall tonnage at the landfill. 2017 had a number of special event projects that were going on that, that kinda bumped that up. I can tell you in 2019, thanks in part, I guess, to flood related debris coming in and so on, that, that tonnage is probably gonna be closer to the 600,000 than 500,000 this year, all things considered. So that's kinda where we're at with that. Landfill life expectancy still, from a conservative standpoint, is probably around that, which is kind of a ways out there. I can tell you that, that, that's gonna fluctuate a little bit depending on kinda what kind of things come into the landfill and, and so on. So we'll, we'll adjust that accordingly as we go forward. But with that, let me know what questions you have.
Commissioner Boyle.
Yes, I, I wanna thank you first of all for that excellent presentation. It was very, very well done, and it was readable, which really helps, so thanks a lot. The other thing I wanted to ask about, I had a couple of calls. One is from, of course, people who were damaged by the flooding, and they were looking for some special treatment at the landfill, which I don't think we gave. I'd like us to discuss the possibility of doing that. I don't know if we have the ability or not in the future to be able to do something that helps them out, or if there's some way we can figure out giving them some relief from the payments. I just asked that you put that on the agenda, we'll maybe discuss it next time. And then another was, I had a, a call from a fellow, and I, I lost the note on it naturally, but he runs a detox center somewhere in South Omaha, and he was calling about trash removal, you know, and he has to pay for that, and it was kind of getting expensive for him, and I don't know whether we have any way we can, do we do any of that at all? We don't, do we?
We, we currently don't have anything that would be specific to that, no.
That's fine, thanks.
In response to your other, your other question about the disaster relief, I know we did work with Audi or in the Health Department, they provided a couple of dumpsters, and I think they're still perhaps doing a little bit of that in the, the King Lake area, some other places where we had some debris piles, and we'll put that as, as part of what we're requesting for reimbursement from FEMA.
Are you putting dumpsters out there?
There, there were some, there were some out there. I'm not, I'll have to check and see if they're still out there. I think that was concluded, but yeah, we, there were some things that the county did do as part of that.
Well, I don't mean to be a total bleeding heart about this, but last night I saw on television that people over in Pacific Junction, they got blasted again, you know. The piles of debris outside those homes, it seems like, I don't know what they're doing. I know they're not our, our problem, so to speak, but I think, you know, we, I would like to see us think regionally and try to help, help where we can. And I think it's someplace like Pacific Junction that's just been blasted, I think, three times now, really could use some support from the general community. So I know that's beyond things. Putting some dumpsters out there, instead of having them throw it out in their front yard might be helpful. I don't know if their government would like us to help or not.
It was part of the discussion with the Heartland 2050 Regional Planning Effort and some of the, the Solid Waste Working Group things that, that I chair, so I can at least introduce that conversation there and, and see, see what support maybe there is for something like that.
Yeah, and I don't mean on a regular basis, but I think in situations like this, that, you know, it's not good for us to be so close and just kind of watch, watch them go through such misery where I think we could really help. Thanks.
Commissioner Kraft. Yes, and I just, again, I want to thank you for a clear and concise report. Next week after our, our county board meeting, we'll have a community service meeting, and perhaps we can discuss the question Commissioner Boyle brought up at that time. Also, I noticed that Mills County was picking up hazardous waste, asking everybody to put in piles outside of their flooded areas. Are we, I know we have the under the sink, that, okay. Are we going to do anything specifically to go out and collect the hazardous waste?
At this point, no, that, that has not been a particular discussion. I think to the credit of, of a lot of residents that were impacted by the March flooding, I think they did a pretty admirable job of separating things out into kind of what could go to a landfill, what could potentially be reclaimed, you know, from a metal standpoint, from a like white goods with refrigerators and, and things that have Freon in them, and getting those separated out. So I, I, I think that message got out fairly early, and I commend the, the folks who kinda did that segregation and, and got some of that stuff in the right, right piles and went to the right places. So to, to your point, that's more of a, maybe an initial discussion with the city of Omaha and Sarpy County about some outreach from under the sink going out. And I know you, you brought this up before in terms of having some outreach activities, special event type things that go out in addition to the drop off site at 120th and I.
And I keep bringing it up many times.
Yes, you do.
Then next week at our county board meeting, we are gonna be, at the community service meeting, since I'm talking on it, we are going to have four applicants we're discussing for the zoning board of appeals, I believe it is. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. And we have four applicants for the visitor and promotion council we're gonna be discussing. So we need to discuss, we have four quality applicants for each position, which is kind of a rarity. So I'd appreciate everybody's participation. Thank you.
You're welcome.
No further questions, Ken?
Okay.
Well, let me make sure, let me follow up with Commissioner Boyle's question, 'cause I had this question too, so particularly it came up at a board of health meeting. So instead of waiving the tipping fees, you all put dumpsters out there for them to put it in, put, put the material in, out in the King Lake area?
Yes.
And just basically brought it to them, instead of them having to go there?
Well, part of it, if you're looking at from a reimbursement standpoint and trying to apply to FEMA, if we're simply waiving disposal fees, that, that creates an issue for us. I mean, how, we, we really don't have a contract, we don't have an invoice or anything.
Oh, no, it sounds like you solved it. You just, you basically brought it to them. Okay, no. So I guess I'll make sure, okay. All right.
Yeah. And one of, one of the other complicating things with this flood was that we had some people in one part of the county that were affected, and it'd be extremely difficult to try to ask my staff at the Scale House to figure out, okay, is this flood damage or is it not flood damage? Because suddenly, everybody has flood damage, whether they did or not. It's just the, just human nature here.
No, I hear you, no, you found, you found a sweet spot. Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, Commissioners, I'm gonna hold the other kind of solid waste reporting issues until next week at the committee meeting.
All right.
All right, thank you.
Thanks. We'll go back up to item A in the financial report. Item one is the budget report.
Mr. Moore.
That's submitted. We'll go on to item two, which is presentation by the juvenile court probation on department's fiscal year 1920 budget request, which is in excess of the budget target amounts.
Good morning. Mary Wysik, Chief Probation Officer for the Juvenile Probation Office. Thank you for having me today. As opposed to May, we had training and state conference, so we couldn't make it last month. Not sure what everyone wants to hear, so I'll just run through a really basic overview of where we're at. As you know, the county is responsible just for our operating expenses, meaning the building, pens, papers, computers. The state is responsible for the probation officer salaries and all the services that are provided to juveniles that we serve. So in the fiscal year 1718, the state paid 4.7 million in salaries and 15 million for juvenile services, and that includes the 3.7 million that was paid to the Douglas County Youth Center for Detention. We have, I'm sorry?
How much was that?
3.7 million. We have about 95 staff. When we're fully staffed, we're about 89 today. That breaks down to about the, for the county portion of that, to about $1,150 per person. The main part of our county budget is dedicated to support our IT services. So about 75% of our county funds is going to dot com for computers and chargebacks and the lease agreements. We lease our computers that we use. 6% of our budget goes to support the Douglas County Grant Rider, 10% for purchase services like maintenance, printing, copier leases, 6% office supplies, and only 3% for furniture. We've tried pretty hard to make do with what we have and continue to get some federal surplus furniture for the Keyline Building. We do have some community based aid funds to support the JDAI Coordinator and the JDI Data Coordinator. Any questions specific to what we're looking for?
Commissioner Boyle.
Yes, would you do me, do me a favor and just send an email or something on those splits, just when I'm kind of...
I have copies if you want.
Okay, that'd be great. I'd like to see one. I'm kind of astounded by the IT expense, if I heard it correctly. And when you get it back to the mic, maybe you can tell us what's, why that is, if it's as high as it sounded. How much is it again?
The, the IT expenses are 75% of our budget.
Okay.
So we have a lease agreement with the dot com, lease the computers. We have a three-year lease and a four-year lease for different pockets of computers. So with the lease agreements come up, it's $26,000 at a time, or $36,000 at a time.
I guess my question really is not, excuse me for interrupting, is more, what are you, what are you using all that IT for?
So the probation officers spend much of their time in the field?
What?
In the field, working out in the field, so they need laptops that have the access, the MiFi access.
Sure.
Which is, there are certain pockets of the city that don't have wireless access.
Sure, okay.
So when they're out in Douglas County, they're using the computers in the field. And we use those in the homes with kids to help do job applications. We do video things if children are placed out of the home, then we have a video hookup that we can allow the family to see their child at the placement they're at, all sorts of things.
So let's see, your budget is, let's see, where is this? What is your, what's the dollar amount on that? The reason I'm kinda, I'm really surprised, I'd like to try to find a way to do that better. Maybe I ought to have our Diana, our guru computer person figure out something else. I mean, this is, what's the dollar amount on that? It's 75% of your budget.
It's, it's between 75 this year, 60 and 75,000.
Oh, okay, well, that's not that bad, I guess.
Yeah. Our budget is small.
Yeah, all right.
We're just, we're about $100,000. We were, we've been at 94 for several years. Last year, I asked for 6,000 more. This year, to catch up with the dot com pieces, we're asking for $10,000 more, and that should do it. So it'll be a total of 110,000.
Excess 110,000 is your budget, or?
10,000 excess.
Okay, so you're, when I read this, it looks like you're asking for 110,000.
Total.
Total, but that's not, that's not above your budget. That is your budget.
Our budget was about 100, so the 10 is above.
Okay, well, I misread this, and I thought then that meant that your budget was like a million dollars, which I was a little confused.
No, small budget.
Thanks. You're not driving around in Mercedes then, or anything like that? Okay, thanks.
Uh, no, no, that would not be the case.
Thanks. Thank you for the clarification.
Sure.
Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Thank you. I was gonna ask for the same thing that you just pointed out, so I appreciate the background information. Thank you.
Looks like you're off light.
Thanks.
Thank you.
That will go to item three, presentation of the adult, by adult probation on department's fiscal year 1920 budget request, which is in excess of the budget amount. And that amount total request is 203,205.
Good morning. Tim Sprockle, Chief Probation Officer for the Adult District in Omaha. I've provided you with my budget template, which includes our vision and mission statement, our goals, services, and our organizational chart. With the passage of LB 605, District 4A probation has seen an increase in staff from 102 to approximately 129 staff, total staff. To provide that staff with an office, which they need to do their job, is a desk, chair, computer, and file cabinet, essentially what they need to do their job. We use our old equipment for the longest time since I've been with probation for 18 years, we've never really updated desk and furniture. We moved from 42nd and Redmond in 2015 to our new location on 73rd and Belondo, and when we did that, we moved all the equipment with it, and some of those metal desks just literally fell apart, but they're still there, some of them. Then we moved our reporting center that was at the Criminal Justice Building to 83rd and Spring. When they vacated that building, we occupied the entire building. So we also moved equipment from there, and then we, we did what we could in the meantime to survive with the equipment. But the increase in the square footage to accommodate the additional staff and time for cog groups that are provided by the officers, more than 15 different programming classes provided by many different service providers. The state provided 50,000 in startup money for each of those reporting centers, and that literally furnished the group rooms with desks, chairs, some... the group rooms with desks, chairs, some, some other equipment such as computers and monitors. District four A probation in Douglas County strives to keep the community safe and make positive lasting changes in those individuals we supervise. We have more specialized officers than ever before to serve the high-risk clientele that we now serve. We have specialized officers in domestic violence, specialized substance that we use. I'm sure you're familiar with the SAS unit. On page five of the budget request shows our current budget with categorized expenditures. I ask for the increase in our budget because in order for our officers to be effective, they need to at least be adequately equipped. In the fiscal year of two thousand nineteen twenty, I still need to hire ten staff. I just got an email yesterday that I got another additional staff for problem-solving court. Finding space for them has, has been difficult, but we've kind of doubled up officers and offices just to make it work for now. We will be looking for additional space, hopefully. Additionally, on page five are our reporting center expenditures, including expenditures the state provides offenders through our voucher program. I have also provided you with the District four reporting center catalog. That helps explain some of the things we do at the reporting center, the many different programs provided. I hope, sorry. I hope this shows our need for an increase in budget. Take any questions now.
This is, I didn't know you had. I didn't know your staff was this big. I mean, you got a lot, but this that big? And you getting ten more? Can you just expound a little bit on the conversation? I mean, you just mentioned it, the space issue. But can you expound on that so the board is aware of what may be coming down the pipe next year?
Well, I can't predict that we're going to get more staff. That just kind of happens as it goes along with different bills that are passed and things that come above. But we have three locations throughout Omaha. We have Twenty-Fourth and O. We have an office, a satellite office there. We have two reporting centers on Eighty-third and Spring and one on Seventy-third and Belondo. Those officers located in the reporting center are mostly our supervisor, high-risk officers. We have a PSI unit that does PSI's, et cetera. I'm sorry, what was your specific question on the number of staff?
You, no, you, I just said, I commented that I knew you had a good-sized staff, but I didn't know it was that big. But what I was saying, if you can, you mentioned the fact of you're going to be looking for office space, but the conversation that we had before, can you just expound a little bit on the board so they, they can just soak up next year where you may be space-wise and happy to look? Because this could, next year could be a panic where they, where they're coming back because of the staff and just not being able to contain where they're at. So, I just want you to expound with them on, so everybody's aware.
I have, the new staff that I have coming onboard, the ten, I have four officers in new probation officer training that don't have a home. They have, it's eight weeks long, and it takes three months to get through. They're not really officers until they get through that academy. We don't assign them cases. So, we assign them cases when they get out of the academy. I have not located a spot for them, nor the ten that I have to hire. So, totally, total staff that I need to find an office for are about eight or nine. And those, I do have a few empty offices in the other satellites that I can fit them in. What I did in the meantime is some officers have agreed to double up, stay in the same office. They're in the field a lot, so they take turns in the office, because some of the information they share, you can't do it with two people, or with two offenders at one time. The information is sensitive. They go over evaluations, they do the PSI, and they do the updated reports, and they interview the individual. So, they need a space to do that. And in the meantime, we've just made it work that they don't actually have their own office, but they share offices. Does that help?
Commissioner Boyle?
You know, something that occurs to me with, you know, I think we've all observed that all these big box stores that are closing and all these things going on. And I think what we ought to do is, I would suggest that our Chair Duda of the buildings, conduct a meeting, put you on the agenda, discuss your space needs, and maybe some way to, I don't want you to move again necessarily, but make this adequate. It's not really a good thing to have people sharing offices and then trying to talk to people privately and all that. Just adds to the stress of an already stressful job. So, I mean, I'd like to look into what, what you really need and see if we can accommodate it. I don't think you're, I don't think that's unreasonable that people have space to work in. I mean...
In the meantime, I've, I've worked with the county on space. North Thirty is, what's there? Where you get licenses?
Oh, the DMV.
The DMV, yes. There's one on North Thirty that they wanted to get out of that space, and I talked to them about occupying that, which would work great for us to be in the north Omaha community.
Who wants out? The treasure? The treasure or the DMV?
The DMV.
Yeah. Yeah, the DMV is, I think is moving to Fremont, I'm pretty sure.
I also just discussed with Mike Myers about housing a few officers at the jail to do PSI's.
Okay.
Because we're there all the time doing PSI's, and he's working with me to make that happen.
That sounds great.
The criminal justice building where we were
Yeah.
has space potentially available for us. And I have a, my problem-solving court
Tell, define PSI for us.
Pre-sentence investigation. It is a report ordered by the judge prior to sentencing.
Well, I think, I guess what I'm saying is, and I think, I can't speak for Commissioner Duda, although I'd like to. Just move your mouth and I'll say the words, okay? Anyway, no, I think, I think, you know, we are eager. I think the board is interested in making, making sure you have adequate space and you're located in the right places. It sounds like you're doing all that yourself, but I think, you know, if we can help, I think we should.
Appreciate it.
Thanks.
Commissioner Borgson?
Commissioner Chair, thank you
Thank you.
for the presentation. And this, I'm going to kind of get on a soapbox here about the LB six oh five. So, do we have an actual dollar amount that has, if I'm reading this right, on page four, that total is just what you need? But do we have a total dollar amount of what LB six oh five has cost us?
No. Just in the number of staff and to house those is for the county to supply equipment for that. I do not have an actual amount of what it would have, I mean, we moved offices. In that meantime, we moved, and we added a reporting center. You, what you pay for is the desk and the furniture, et cetera, and the space, the square foot. So, the increase in the square foot did increase significantly since two thousand and fifteen. But that, that need was talked about well before LB six oh five.
Well, and that's, I mean, here's what we do. We say, you know, a lot of this increase is due to six oh five, and then we don't have anything to back that up. And so, we need to try to figure out, because I think this board needs to go back to the legislature and prove that what they did is affecting our bottom line with no additional dollars, unless there were additional dollars to cover, that LB six oh five. And I had, I don't think there is, right?
No.
Nope. So, somehow or another, we have to figure out how to capture those costs so we have real data to go down there, because they're going to ask for it.
Well, other than the additional staff, probation has not asked for any money for the longest time. And I think Ron Borg was the, asked for ten thousand when he left in two thousand and fifteen.
But I'm not saying ask from the county. I'm saying we, as the county, need to go to the state and say, another example of here, how you're shifting your cost to us was back during the passage of six oh five, and here, from that date of passage to today, it's costing us an additional, whatever that number is, because you're coming to us now and asking for more money. And one of the reasons you're asking is because of the effects that LB six oh five has had on your work. So, I'm just trying to figure out a way to get that data so that we can go and talk to our senators, and again, demonstrate to them the shift that they're doing to us with the passage of certain legislation.
Okay.
Follow?
Yep.
Thanks.
That's all you got, sir?
That's all I got.
Thanks.
Thank you.
We'll go on to item G, which is human resources. Item one is the weekly personnel report from civil service. And well, before we go, sorry, Joe, you wanted to comment.
Yeah. I just want to, from an overall budget point of view, come back to a theme that I've said before. Today's kind of another example with probation. But if you look at the presentations to the board this year for groups requiring amounts in excess of your bar, of their budget, it's really being driven by the criminal justice system. It's the jail, it's the public defender, it's probation, it's the sheriff. The county attorney didn't come, but that's because during the course of the year, he had a significant supplement in this year's budget. So, if you look at all the areas that are associated with criminal justice, they are growing in excess of our expense targets and are really, you know, while we're generating more money in property tax revenues, you know, there's some things that the commissioners would like to spend on new programs, but it's really being eaten up by the increased cost of the criminal justice system. And, you know, which also, it's not exactly in the budget, but if you look at it, we have a courthouse that's bursting at the seams, new judges being lined up for approval by the legislature. And so, this is, if you look at a fiscal issue that the county is facing, this one is probably the key driver of the increase in our expenses. I just wanted to bring that point up.
Commissioner Boyle?
I couldn't agree with Joe more. And I, over the years, I've pestered governors at public meetings and raised my hand, and they call on me, and I say, we need help with, you know, help us pay for the criminal justice cost in our county. And the rest of the county people stand up and scream, and yes, it's all, you know, this is a huge part of our budget. We know that. And I think what we ought to do, some months ago, I spoke to the governor and asked him if I could speak to someone on his staff about what's really happening in county government, because we're a part of the state. And he gave me a card and gave me the fellow's name, and then I, some events occurred that I didn't get that done. But I think what we ought to do is talk to NACO. This is a statewide problem. You know, there have been cases where out west, there was a pretty dramatic criminal event that the county out there could not pay for, and the state had to step in and pay for it. You know, this is the drag on county budgets for the criminal justice system, regardless of whether it's Kewa Paha County or whether it's Douglas, is pretty substantial. I mean, they're choosing between whether they can put gravel down or hire another jail guard, you know? I think what we ought to do is go to NACO and suggest that we have a, instead of this several hundred million dollar refund that comes back to property taxpayers, you know, in the form of eighteen-dollar checks, I think it'd be a lot more substantial if we said to the governor, instead of that, would you please apply this to paying for criminal justice across the state in a fair way? I think it would make a lot of sense. I don't know if it'd be quite as sexy, but I think it'd be, make more sense. So, I'd like to ask Kelly's and all the other folks involved with lobbying and our guy too, Marcos, to kind of look into this and see if there's something we could present to NACO and then maybe get a legislative bill and have NACO be supportive as well. I think it, we ought to give it a shot, because this is an ongoing problem, and it's just getting worse. I think it's probably, Joe, you can correct me, but I think it's getting close to sixty cents every dollar for criminal justice. Is it about that? So, I mean, you know, this is a real burden on the taxpayers in our community and the state for that matter.
Commissioner Craft?
And, you know, we've talked about, since we're talking about criminal justice and the expense, we've talked about night court.
Yeah.
Lancaster County, I believe it was in yesterday's paper, announced they're going to start a night court. Okay, if Lancaster County can do it, why can't we? The other thing is, I want to point this out especially to the World Herald, that criminal justice is under Mike's committee. So, Mike is responsible.
Can you turn off his mic?
Okay. So, I jest. Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Borgson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just to be clear, and you don't have to come back up, Joe might be able to answer it. I just want to make sure, because again, on the agenda, it's saying that probation was asking for two hundred and, two hundred and three thousand, two hundred and five, two hundred and three thousand, two hundred and five dollars, but that's your total budget. You're only asking for the increase of forty thousand, one hundred and seventy-four Yes. from last year's budget. Okay. I just want to make sure we had that right. Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Duda?
Just to briefly add on to Commissioner Boyle's point, when, going back enough years, when Marianne and I came on, criminal justice was only about a third of the county's budget. And today, it's over two-thirds. I mean, it's, it's, so this absolutely has been the cross driver in our property tax situation.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I forgot to mention that. I have had discussions with the corrections staff about revisiting that night court, or weekend court for that matter. And they're putting together a business plan. They've just been, you know, they're, the shift occurred with the new administration, and they haven't had a lot of time to look at those other priorities. But they know that that's one of those. So, we're, we're working on that.
Commissioner Boyle?
Two cents to that. You know, there's a tremendous objection among our present, our judges about working, no one else who works nights, you know? And years ago, I don't know if you remember, I think you do, remember Rosemary Scrupa. She was appointed a temporary judge of sorts because of a backlog and so forth, and there really was no squawk about it. I think if we're serious about a night court, and I think we should be, look at the benefits, do a night plan or do a business plan and sort of figure out how it would work, and if we, if we really need it, what it would produce. I think what we ask is that a person, there's, you know, seventy-five thousand lawyers in Omaha, that we appoint a, maybe a part-time or a special judge to handle night court. Don't ask the present bench to do it, because they won't. I mean, they just won't. But I think if we hire somebody who is, knows that this is night court, you're going to be working at, you know, midnight or whatever it is, they'll be, they won't have any squawks about anything. So, I think that's what we, the route we ought to take, and maybe go to the Chief Justice Havik and talk to him about it and get his blessing and go for it if we're serious. I think that'd be a good deal.
With that, we will go to item G, which is human resources. Item one is personnel report as presented. Item two is legislative issues. Note, next week, the firm of Kelly and Plucker will be here to present on the legislative session. And with the legislative man?
I have one thing, and I'm sorry I didn't bring it up when we were talking about the budget. There's a couple of things I'd like to see, and I've mentioned this to Commissioner Morgan and also Joe, that I'd like to see the construction budget of the various offices publicly discussed. You know, we've had some remodeling of this building take place, and I'm not sure even the building commission had anything to do with it, but we had some remodeling take place and some fairly big bucks. I think I'd like to have, I would not think, I definitely want to have that public and put into a budget and not sequestered away as it has been. I know it's been legal and all the rest of it, but I think we ought to have something to say about it. The other thing is, on a small note, what I'd like to do is begin to change the way we do some things. One of them is, in our office, we've stopped using Styrofoam cups, and we're using recyclables. And I think, I'd like to see the county begin to do that as a policy. I don't mean to be on a high horse about it, but I think we need to be more concerned, like the cups that we're using here this morning are, are not Styrofoam, and they will biodegrade. I think we ought to be doing that. The other thing, I've talked to Paul Cohen about the installation of drinking fountains. And hopefully, we'll be able to do something about the water being delivered to the buildings around. But you see them all the time now, where you can put a bottle underneath and fill it up with the water. And MUD is good water, and we ought to be doing that all around in the courthouses. And I think we ought to be looking at some alternatives, and we could save some money and get a good product.
Thank you.
So, that's my high horse.
I have a question of Commissioner Boyle.
Commissioner Moore?
I wonder if the people doing this remodeling are getting building permits, because if you're remodeling an office, I mean, that's pretty important.
Yeah.
It'd be good to at least check into that.
No kidding.
Okay. With that, we do have a need for executive session. We reserve the right to enter into executive session in order to protect the public interest with respect to discussion regarding labor negotiations, litigation, and personnel. Is there a motion to go into executive session?
Second.
There's a motion by Commissioner Boyle, second by Commissioner Morgan. There's a motion by Commissioner Boyle, second by Commissioner Morgan.
Is this for all three reasons?
All three reasons, yep. We're going into executive session for labor negotiations, litigation and personnel.
We should be out within three hours.
Yes, yes, three hours, could be literally. You good? Okay, there, please vote.
This is for you.
Oh. What do you mean on the, Commissioner Morgan? On the TV or you mean your guys'? Motion passes seven to zero.
I'm adjourned.
All right.
Yeah.
Voting yes. Motion passes six to zero.